Okay, thank you everyone so much for attending. My name is Megan Taylor and I'm this year's president of the Southwestern City Schools Council of PTAs, your host for this evening. Our council board, officers, and chairpersons help support the work of our council, and as well as our thirty-one currently active PTA units in the district. I want to thank everyone who helped make this event happen. Take a quick moment to thank the Southwestern Career Academy for the venue. I'd like to thank all of the candidates for working with us to make tonight happen, and Sergeant McCoy for helping out with our duty. Can I just get a quick hand raise of people here? How many of you are part of your school's PTA or PTO? Pretty good, that's pretty awesome. Okay, so if you've been at any of my events so far, you know that I always like to rehash the PTA mission, which is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for children. So that's like why we're all here, right? Yeah. So that's why we do events like this, like a candidate forum. The goal of this nonpartisan event is to provide a neutral platform for all candidates to express themselves to others. I want to take a moment and just ask everybody here to kind of take a look around the room. We've built a lot of chairs tonight, and I really appreciate everyone who's here live and on our Facebook watching the livestream. I know there's a lot of big feelings in this room about this big important job that we're talking about tonight, Board of Education members. People sitting next to you are more than just folks that might agree or disagree with you. They're your neighbors, your educators, maybe your barista or your accountant. They are not just the parents of the children your kids go to school with, but who they play sports with, do band with, Cub Scouts, go ask to go on a playdate with, or a real date with your parenting teens. I'm not there yet. So I just wanted to remind everybody that simple thing, that together we are all here because we're a community. We care about the children in our school district, and we do have a common ground and a common cause. That said, I'd like to introduce our candidates. So tonight we have Ms. Chelsea Alkire, Mr. Chris Bosso, Dr. Kelly Dillon, Ms. Camille Peterson, Mr. Jason Gochet, and Mr. Steve Feist. I'd also like to introduce our moderating team. We've had the help of the Grove City Toastmasters tonight, helping us with this event. So we've got Bill, Darren, and Ashley. And I'm gonna let Bill take it over from here with our rules for the evening.
Welcome, everybody. The candidates have already been briefed on how we're going to run the meeting this evening, and at this time, you have a duty as well. And hopefully, most of you have read the boards, the participant info. It's the highest level decorum and respect that is expected and demanded tonight. If you don't like a candidate, that's okay, the person next to you might. Respect is what we're looking for tonight. We'd like you all to remain from any verbal noise from the audience during each of the candidates answering their questions this evening. Let's be fair to everybody. If it gets out of hand, we have a gentleman in the back.
Here's a guy.
Just be respectful, that's all we ask tonight. At the end of two minutes, when the candidate is done answering the question, only one person will applaud, and that's going to be Ashley. Sitting over there, she's going to let the candidates know, you're done. Your two minutes are up, shut up! I think they're gonna do just fine. So please refrain from clapping until we let you know it's okay to clap. Make sense to everybody? There were questions that were submitted from the public. A nonpartisan group went through all the questions, and we had to narrow it down. Now, I believe there were over fifty questions submitted. If you want to, we can go through all fifty questions and we'll still be here tomorrow morning. You want to do that? I didn't think so. So we narrowed it down to what, or the group narrowed it down, to what they felt were the best questions for the candidates to answer. If you still have a question, I'm sure you can still talk to the candidates later. That's up to you. Thank you very much, we're so glad you're here, and please participate with patience, kindness, and love your neighbor.
But not with your cellphones.
Yeah, oh, good point. If you have one of those devices, which I think everybody in this room has, a cellphone, please put it on mute or silent, so you do not interrupt the candidate during a speech when the Ohio State theme song goes off in the middle of an answer, or something of that nature. So if you please mute your phones at this time. Are you ready to get started? Candidates, you ready?
Restrooms, if you need, are through that door.
Yep. Restrooms over there if you need them. Let's get started. And we will give everybody a chance to answer the question first. We would just rotate around as we ask the questions, so it's fair to everybody. Starting with question number...
Make sure the mics are on.
Your opening statement, two minutes for opening statements.
Ready for your opening statements, we'll start with candidate number one.
Hi, everybody, my name is Chelsea Alkire. I have lived in the district for a fairly short time, but I have been part of the district for about fifteen years. I was raised on the south end of Columbus. I graduated from Columbus City Schools, valedictorian, class of nine, and then I went to Bowling Green, where I studied Spanish. I then became a bilingual assistant and a special needs instructional assistant, and decided that I wanted to go back and get a degree in education, so I became a TSAL-certified teacher. I came to the district, and Mr. Ed Kennedy, the head of the EL department, said, "Based on where you're from, I have a school you'd be great at," and I ended up at Finland Middle School. I was there for seven years, went to Heights for two years, and then I switched over to Groveport Madison Local Schools, because I was living in Groveport and my children were attending school in Groveport. It just made a lot more sense with calendars and things. But then we ended up buying a house in Grove City, so I just flipped my drive into the other direction. In the school district, while I was teaching, I also taught summer school. I was a coach of track, which was fun, because I have never ran track in my life, but there was a need for coaches. I have been a club advisor, and I have been a member of the PTA, and I also wrote grants for my students, so they've got opportunities that they may not otherwise. I'm running for the board because it kind of got to the moment of, if I don't run now, when will I run? Now is the moment. I want to make a difference, I want to make a difference for all of the stakeholders in the community. I recognize that there are parents, students, staff members, business owners, that want to be heard, that maybe right now are not being heard and don't know how to get their voices heard. My goal is that everyone feels comfortable coming to board meetings.
I know, I went off track.
First, I'd like to just thank everybody for being here, thank the PTA for putting this on. Do I need it?
Yes.
My name is Chris Bosso, if everybody doesn't know me. I've lived in this community, in this district, for my whole life. I've been married for twenty-eight years to my wife, and we've raised three kids in this district, all graduating from Southwestern City Schools. I've been with Columbus Fire Department for thirty years, I'm still active. Also, I own a business here in Grove City. You know, I'm up here, and just a couple hours ago, I was at Westman High School, commending them on their report card from the state. They got three and a half stars. Their stars went up from two and a half to three, three and a half in the past three years. And I've been trying, as a board member, the past four years, to change the culture in this district. I've always been active as far as worrying about the atmosphere in the learning environment. We have great teachers in this district, we have great curriculum in this district, we have great administrators in this district, but if we don't have an environment in the classroom for learning, it does not matter. And I've been working on that since I've been on this board. We have six candidates up here, we all have our ideas what's best for this district, and that's great. But the two gentlemen that I'm running with and myself, I truly believe our vision for this district is the best, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the PTA organization, and for Bill and Darren for moderating this panel. My husband Eric and I have lived in the district for over twenty years, we're married for twenty-one, high school sweethearts, together thirty years. We have two children that are in our Southwestern City Schools, both are at Grove City High School. They started with the PiR model preschool, and one is a senior graduating this spring, and the other is a junior. I have a bachelor's and master's in psychology. I used to work in special education research, grant writing, medical school research as well, and I said, "Well, why should everybody else get to be called doctor, I want to?" So I went back, put a really great job, and chased a dream I never knew I had, and I got my PhD from the Ohio State University. I am now, my tenth year, as an associate professor of Communication and Digital Media at Wittenberg University, and I am also director of our faculty development. I, we specifically bought a home in Southwestern City Schools when we relocated to this area, because it was and still remains a district of distinction. We knew we wanted our children to have as many opportunities as possible, whether it was in the arts or in academics, and including the Career Academy, which I believe is one of the jewels of our district. I decided that now is the time, because I wanted to make sure that other voices were heard as well. I think there, we have a huge, and I know we have a great and diverse district, and I believe our entire district needs to be represented on our board, and not just from a specific geographic location, although I do recognize that I live in that geographic location. I do believe our size and our diversity is one of our strengths, and we can really learn from each other, and make sure that we continue to be a district of distinction and of destination. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Camille Peterson. I've lived in the Southwestern City School District twenty-one years, in the Galway Ridge area. I have no problems reading for my paper. It has been a tremendous honor to serve as a member of our local school board. I'm running to be elected, because I believe deeply in the power of education, not only to shape the future of our children, but to strengthen the very fabric of our community. This work is personal to me. As a parent of three Westman High School graduates, I've seen firsthand the impact that strong schools and dedicated educators can have in shaping the lives and building futures. For more than twenty years, I have dedicated my time and energy to supporting children, advancing educational opportunities, and in that time, I've witnessed how powerful it can be when a community comes together, when parents, teachers, students, and neighbors work toward a shared vision. I know we don't all share the same views, but our diversity is not something to overcome, it is something to celebrate. Different perspectives make us stronger. They help us build schools that reflect and serve the entire community. I don't approach this role through the lens of politics. I approach it as a parent, a neighbor, and someone who believes deeply in the strength of our community. If elected, I will continue to lead with transparency, listen with respect, and make decisions that put our students and families first.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jason Gochet. I am a proud graduate of Franklin Heights High School, so I've lived in this district for over forty years, first as a child growing up, graduating from the district, and now choosing to raise my family, my kids here in this district as well. I currently work as an operations supervisor in logistics management, which means fancy terms for, I work in a warehouse and I help ship things to people. If you've ever gotten anything from back to body, it may have come from my facility. So I've led teams of people, both big and small. I have also led numerous projects, whether it's planning and preparing for a busy holiday season, or shutting a warehouse down and moving a brand across the country. So I have lots of experience that I think would be very beneficial to a board member here in Southwestern City Schools. I am extremely, extremely proud of my background from Franklin Heights. As Kelly said, this board needs to have some wider scope and represent everybody, and that's what I hope to do from representing Franklin Heights. I also want to take a second to just thank the other candidates. We all know this is not an easy thing, what we're doing, and I just want to say thank you to you guys for stepping up and putting your names forward. Hopefully, whoever fills the three seats that are open, we can work together and look forward to that.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. It's truly encouraging to see so many people here, people who care deeply about our school district and the well-being of our students. My name is Steve Feist, and I'm honored to be with you here today. Whether you're a parent, teacher, student, or community member, your presence here today matters, and it speaks volumes about your commitment to our schools. Let me begin by saying that I believe in the power of positivity. I believe that when focused, when we focus on solutions, when we support one another, we stay student-centered in our decisions. We can make incredible things happen when this transpires. I'm here because I care about our students, our teachers, our families, and the future of our district. I bring with me a commitment to transparency, collaboration, and continuous improvement. Yes, we're not perfect, continuous improvement, and praise those that continue to put forth the effort. I value listening, and I want to hear from all of you, your concerns, your ideas, and your hopes. Our schools face both challenges and opportunities, and I believe we can meet these together with respect, vision, and hard work. And specifically, the hard work is dear to me, something that I really admire. For more, I would like to refer you to the candidates' bio listed on the site by the PTA.
Thank you very much, candidates, for that introduction. We will now get into our question and answer period. Question number one, and we'll start with number one candidate. What do you believe is the most significant concern for Southwestern City Schools in this district, and how will you address it if elected?
Thank you. I believe that the biggest challenge that the district currently faces is community engagement and trust. I think that some of our disadvantaged families throughout the district are doubly disadvantaged, because they feel they're not being advocated for in the schools, and they do not have the tools to advocate for themselves outside of schools. This includes families that are dealing with homelessness, poverty, language issues that they cannot communicate with the schools or with the district. I believe that the community also, along with the community engagement, if they feel they are not being heard, they feel like they cannot trust what is happening within the district. If the decisions that are being made do not follow protocol, and if the board makes decisions that are not for the best interest of everybody, then the trust will dwindle, and the community, the families, the parents, are the people that we need to be listening to. People are starting to voice concerns, and I think that the district, whether it's the current board or the board that comes into position in January, needs to listen, because it's not that people are just now having issues, it's that the issues are starting to be heard by more people, and people are starting to voice the concerns. So if we are not having trust within the entire district, within the families, students, staff, and board, and we are not able to get the families involved in the schools, then we will continue to have more concerns grown.
Candidate number two.
I'll go back to my opening statement. Well, I'll go back to my opening statement with our culture. Our kids are bombarded out of our school district with social media and everything and the crap they're hearing, and I think our school district does a good job of getting together with communities and schools, the YMCA, the police department, the Prairie Township area, the Grove City area, to try to get into the home lives of these kids. When I talk about that, I, I know when they come to our school district, and they come into our buildings, we can control that. We can control what goes on in our buildings. We can control the atmosphere and what goes on. I was at an event early in the year at one of our high schools, and a resource officer and a custodian told me that the culture in that school has changed in the last two years. He said, "We are holding kids responsible for their actions. Things are looking better in that school." He said, "He used to come to school, put on his uniform, wasn't very happy to come to our schools as far as working, but now he is excited to be in our schools." And, and just because what's going on in our schools and our classroom environment, I always, with my kids growing up, I held them responsible. I never coddled my kids, and I feel the same way, we don't need to cuddle kids in this district. Trust me, kids are in bad shape around our district. I mean, we got parents that we gotta get connected with, guardians that we gotta get connected with, but we still can't cuddle our kids, because we have to get these kids ready for life outside of educational buildings to compete in our school. Thank you.
Candidate number three.
Public education is under attack, period. It's under attack from our state leaders, in their budgets, in their rhetoric, and in their leadership. Nearly a billion dollars is being picked out of public schools' pockets right now from our annual budget, and it's not acceptable. Capitalism works, I'm a fan of it, but competition doesn't work in public schools. We can't raise prices to get better teachers to stay here. We can't suddenly decide to float a levy and say, "Hey, we need to get brand-new school buses with all the bells and whistles in it, because everybody has to get wherever they need to go, without the money that comes from the state." Our money. I think one of the biggest challenges and concerns in our district is that public dollars are not staying in our public schools. And I believe we need people at our state house fighting every day. There are five seats on the school board, there are five days of the week that our state leaders are in Columbus. Someone should be assigned every day. They're emailing, they're calling, they're sitting, they're testifying, they have the cellphone numbers of the individuals that are writing these laws and picking our pockets. I think that when we are losing those public funds, it exacerbates the disparities of resources in our district. There is no reason why Franklin Heights Athletic Field has rotting wood for their ramp, and Grove City Leisure Field has great banisters and ramps. There's no reason why kids might need coats because a boiler goes out in an older building, but you move three miles down the road, and it's not like that. I lived down the street from Franklin Heights, my kids went to the old and new Harmon, and then they moved, and we moved, and they went to J.C. Summers and Hayes Intermediate, and the disparity in resources and opportunities was engrossed.
Candidate number four.
My priorities would be to advocate for equitable distribution of resources. That is a challenge in the district, and it's obvious. Advocating for that is so that every school has what it needs to support its unique student population. I also think we need to empower educators in the staff, and we need to do that by providing some meaningful support, and professional development and training for all that helps us get further. The other thing is strengthening family and community engagement, so all voices are included in shaping the opportunities that help every student succeed, prepare them for a stronger future. It takes all of those areas to be able to do that, and unfortunately, we don't have just one area that is really a struggle for our district. I feel like in this era of time right now, we have multiple. I will also advocate for legislation that strengthens funding for public education at the state, local, and national levels. We have to challenge and tackle what our district is facing at a multi-factor level, and we need to do it simultaneously. It won't happen overnight. It's gonna take dedication, it's gonna take hard work, and it's gonna take advocacy to get it done, but there is some changes we do have control over that we can't start working on.
Candidate number five.
So from my perspective, one of the biggest things that I think is facing our district is safety. I know that was recently brought up at one of the board meetings, but I want to share my perspective on that. I have a child who had their life threatened while on school property. We, as a family, had to deal with that and are still dealing with it from time to time. We were very happy with the principal at the school this happened at. It was more a problem with the policies of the district and the outcome. We were not happy with it. That's one of the reasons why I'm running. Another safety perspective, though, is also that I have a relative who works in the district, and one of their duties is if the school were to have somebody try and come in, is to lock the school down. It is not okay that that relative has to consider swallowing the key to keep the building safe. We need to perform safety audits, we need to implement better plans, so that that's not a concern for any employee at any of the schools. We have over thirty buildings in this district, we have four school resource officers. We need to make that a priority to get more law enforcement involved around the kids at a younger age where it can make more of a difference. Thank you.
Candidate six.
I agree with Jason. I will support four additional resource officers. One of the things I want to touch on are narratives, and narratives become part of a positive model that we need to embrace. We can say we're advocating, or are we an activist? To me, there's a difference. An advocate for a child that is, that needs help, I can understand that, advocating for your son or your daughter, and I can understand advocating profusely, right? It's your child, I get that, but where do we draw the line? How many make noise, and how many of us listen to what's really going on? You know, negativity matters. Have you tried behind the scenes to correct issues, or are you going public? And for me, it's very important to try and work everything out with parties involved. You owe them that, and it leads to the positive method. Finding qualified people, that's an issue for this district. But as in everything, just walking out of the mail today, got a brochure, and we can see our district right here, you know, "Be the Difference," now hiring. Look at the, you know, look at here, substitute financial, right now we're offering five hundred dollars lump sum payments for people who come work for our district. It's on our mind. We know, we know what's going on here. The district, I trust that the people involved here are doing the right things. And real quick, I would ask all of you to look at the May nineteenth board we can watch, and see the lady, the principal that runs East Franklin. Listen to her lovely discussion and how much positivity she has going. Next, listen to the behavior methods being mentioned. And lastly, listen to how we're trying to hire the proper people. It's not perfect, but we're trying.
Thank you, candidates. Question number two. How would you foster or continue to foster relationships between the district, community partners, and related organizations? community partners, and related organizations? We'll start with candidate number two.
I think the district does a, well, I think the district does a great job in fostering community activi- I could say activism, community support, I mean, with all the people we partner with. I mean, like I said earlier, we partner with City Grove City, Prairie Township, we partner with YMCA, the Mid-Ohio Food Banks. We got so many entities out there that are out there advocating for kids outside of our district. I myself, when I'm out on, in the town, I'm always advocating for this district. I'm always telling people what a great district we have and the things we're doing in this district. We hear a lot of negativity in this district lately, and I just think it's, it's hurting us. And like Steve was saying, especially hurting us with hiring. When people hear all these things about, "We're dysfunctional here," we are not dysfunctional in this district. We truly have a great district and we are operating very well. I, I think that our administration, our HR people are trying to get the best people here, but with all the negativity, it's hurting us. And that's why I lashed out a little bit at a board meeting with the SWIA. I thought everything they were saying was just not true. We are very well-grounded in this district, and the people we have here are great people. And I just think, as a district, we are very involved with, with the community, with advocacy for this district. Thank you.
Candidate number three.
We're the fifth-largest school district in our state, one hundred and nineteen square miles. We have over seventy-five languages that are spoken in our district. Nearly forty percent are eligible for free or reduced lunch, and twenty percent of our students are on an IEP. That tells me we have a diverse population. We encompass suburban, rural, and urban areas. We cross a couple of townships and a couple of cities. I believe we need to meet our communities where they are. Not everyone can get to the district service center for a seven o'clock board meeting. Maybe we can have more of them here or more elsewhere. We need to have listening sessions and town halls. They might be on weird hours because some of our parents work weird hours. They might have one, two, maybe even three jobs. That's how it was when I was growing up. My dad had four jobs at one point, just to keep the lights on. And I know plenty of our community and our parents and even those who don't have kids in our schools, they're still part of our community and they need to be heard. So we need to go where they are. We need to speak the languages that they are speaking. We need to be available in spaces and at times that they are available and that they feel comfortable coming. If they're needing to travel six, seven miles and they don't have reliable transportation and there is not a code of bus stop near where we're having our school board meetings, they're not going to come if we don't have those listening meetings, if we don't have more visioning sessions, if we don't actually use proper survey techniques to figure out where our community and to use those techniques to actually gather good data. We need to meet people where they are and to hear what they're saying rather than fitting them into our own boxes.
Candidate number four.
That question involved all of our stakeholders, all of them. And most and all of those stakeholders are taxpayers. What I will tell you is your educators, your school employees, your community members, your organizations and entities that we partner with, they should play an active and collaborative role in school board decision-making. Their firsthand experiences and perspectives provide valuable insight into how policies and initiatives are affecting our students, our classrooms, and the community. The board should open, foster, should foster open communication, invite input through public meetings, advisory committees, and ensure transparency so stakeholders feel heard and represented. While the board ultimately makes the decision, those decisions should be informed by the voices of the people who work in them and learn in them and support our schools every day. That is through town halls. That may be through surveys. You may notice I push a lot of surveys. And oftentimes at school board meetings, I feel like our staff or administrator or someone will say, "We only received eight responses. We only received five." Those eight are worthy to be heard. It is a start. So I continue to say, push surveys. Push them so that we get that feedback, and that's another opportunity. But we have room to open up our forum to be able to include stakeholders and get some more communication in.
Candidate number five.
As Camille said, this is something that involves all the stakeholders in our district. I'm not going to rehash the list that Chris said, but we've got a lot of partners already in place. I, I agree with Camille that we need to continually push more surveys to find out what the evolving needs of our district are. It's never staying the same. It's, it's not stagnant. So we need to constantly be in touch with those stakeholders and seeing what their needs are at that moment and constantly working then to find new partners to meet those evolving needs. I would also love to see, since we have four high schools in the district, I would love to see at least once a quarter, each school get a chance to host an event for the community to come in. Let those parents come in. Not all parents can make a PTA meeting, and that's sad, but give them other opportunities to speak up and be heard. Make sure that the businesses get a chance to come in and share their concerns and how we can better support them. There's lots of ways that we can increase the amount of information flowing from the school to the parents and then back to the school. That's how we're going to get better, is by hearing what everybody needs and trying to meet those needs.
Candidate six.
One thing I've learned in business is that you, if you don't ask, you don't receive. So I would encourage all members of our district, if they see a need, reach out. Because I can guarantee you, if you do not reach out to corporations, to ex-teachers that would volunteer, there's millions of opportunity that we could still improve upon. I'd like to share with you a brief experience. So I went and had lunch, my wife and I did, two weeks ago here at the diner, at the, at the, at here at the school. And it was amazing. And developed a rapport with the gentleman who runs it. And he got talking about he would like a food truck. And I said, "Well, that'd be nice." And we started going over some things. He said, "We'd like to put it in-house. We'd like to start from beginning to end." That means bringing the truck in, fixing it, putting a skin on it, using everything here to tech school to make it a product of this school, then put it out in our community to get us some branding and make it profitable. The only thing I left him with, I said, "Have you asked?" He's a great person, by the way, but my mind goes into, "If you don't ask for donations, and if you don't start that ball-rolling, you have to communicate." He was a great person, but the first thing you had to do is to start the process. And the more you bring that forward, the more you're gonna get change. Another thing I would ask one is the faith-based, we could ask faith-based centers to come in. We could take, and they could help with school supplies at the beginning of the year, help students in need. I believe that's an avenue. And I also believe that the family, parents, like retired members, I think we're missing an opportunity to ask those that have given here to go out and actually, I use their term headhunt, go out and headhunt and ask our teachers that had served. I think that they would come back. A group would come back and give for free, and it makes them, would make them feel good.
Candidate number one.
I would argue that the relationships between the community and the school district need to not just be us reaching out to the community and asking them for support. It is a mutual relationship. That's how you build relationships. Sometimes you take, sometimes you give. With that being said, I think that when we are developing these relationships within the community, occasionally we do need to reach out for community support. Why are we reaching out to large corporations? Because we know they're gonna give money. But who could we be reaching out to? La Plaza Tapatia, Sorato Market, West Side Slice. Places that are in the community, built by community members, that are more than willing to support us. Because when they do that, we can then support them. We can tell people that's where they should be going. If we have events at the schools, they could host. And then people would be seeing their names. They would be seeing their products. They would get them out there. Another thing is that the community partners are where our students should be looking to apply for jobs. We have tons of students that have tons of free time on their hands when they get to high school. And there are businesses in our community that need employees. If we had something set up where the community businesses would be able to tell us that they have openings and we would be able to go out and find students to fill those positions, I think it would benefit everybody within the community. We have less students with free time on their hands. We have businesses that are being supported, and they have the employees to do everything that they need to do.
Thank you. Question number three, and we'll start with candidate number three for the answer. How do you plan to address transportation issues within the district?
Transportation issues are important in our district. There are, we don't have enough drivers. We don't have enough aides. We have an aging fleet. And it's clear that our state is not going to give us the money that we have put towards our education, at least not willingly. I did some research before tonight, especially on transportation, and surrounding districts are paying anywhere between fifteen and thirty percent more per hour at a starting salary. And it's no wonder why someone would rather drive for Taze Valley or drive for Hilliard Schools if they're going to make two, three, maybe even four dollars more an hour. We need to remain competitive. We also need to understand who our employees are. I know that we have supervisors having to drive routes because maybe we have someone that can drive, but there might be some benefits issues or they're only part-time, so they don't get enough benefits. So they might not get a paid time off to take care of an aging parent or an aging spouse, or even their own health. So I do believe that beyond recruitment events, obviously pay and pay equity in terms of what we're looking at in the overall Central Ohio area, we need to be a leader in that. We also need to be a leader in terms of valuing our transportation staff. I think they need to be heard more than once a year. There need to be conversations, not just, "This is how many parents have called us. This is how many times we've heard that drivers were, you know, attacked in some way or, you know, abused in some way." We need to be more proactive on that and helping our community understand that they are partners in solving that problem. I think our app and our recruitment events are a good start.
Candidate number four.
Transportation, tough area. I'm gonna answer this one as a current board person. And I'm gonna be honest. I'm gonna tread it lightly because they are still in their negotiations. But what I will tell you is, we value our transportation drivers. I've said a many-day campaign that we need our drivers. We need transportation to be able to put our kids in the seats so that we have kids to educate. We don't have kids in the seats, we can't educate. There needs to be competitive pay. We have to keep ourselves aligned with surrounding districts and ensure that they feel valued and heard. It is a tough one. It is a nationwide issue. You probably have been following the Columbus City Schools. I know I've been following it. And I, I, I think every day, I'm so grateful that we are not to where we have to say that we have to get rid of high school busing. And I hope that there is a day we stay away from that. And over the time of me being appointed on a seat, in this seat, I should say, there has been great tremendous strides at trying to recruit, to retain. I think when I came in, we started offering incentives and getting those a part of trying to address it. I think our app, I will say, I'm not a big fan of the app. It has a lot of software issues. So I have a few, few questions on that and, and wonders with our, our software app. But it is a challenging, challenging area, and it is not a magical law for it. And so I won't sit here and say there is a magical law for it.
Candidate number five.
Transportation is definitely an issue, not only here for us in southwestern city schools, but across the state and the country. I think one of the things we need to do is make sure that we are constantly reevaluating, are we using the most efficient bus routes? I know the district already does that, but we need to continually do that, stay on top of that, make sure, because those routes will change as people move. We need to make sure that we've got training that continues to take place for the drivers to make sure that they're prepared for when kids get rowdy, things like that. We don't want to scare the, the drivers away. And so if we make sure that they are properly trained and that this is something that they get an opportunity to go through repeatedly, that hopefully they will do, feel more comfortable in their position. I think as Steve alluded to earlier with a different question, one of the things, though, that is hurting us is our district's reputation. And I think that if anybody's been to any of the board meetings, it's very divisive. I think that if that gets toned down, our reputation will improve. And that, that's both sides. There's, there's a lot of, of people who come with very strong opinions. And when that gets displayed on the recordings of the board meetings for others to see, it doesn't help our district's reputation. So if we can tone some, down some of that, I think that our reputation will improve and we will find that we will not only keep top candidates, but will also attract new ones as well.
Candidate number six.
This is a business, and with businesses come tough decisions. The world right now, we are having problems filling certain holes in our society. But when we look at the bus drivers, and I, I'm gonna refer to the CUP report, 2024 CUP report. That's the metric for all schools, how they're measured every year. Get a balance sheet of how every bit of money is spent within our district. And if you look at line forty-five, we spend on average $700 per student for transportation on, on needs, let's put that, for staff support. So we're in line. It's not, there's not that much of a variance from different school systems. We're in line. Now, the metrics and the way we approach certain situations may need to change. And I can sit here and tell you that I really haven't looked at it enough to, to form an opinion about how you would do that, but it immediately comes to mind is reaching out and getting some, getting some opinions on how we can encourage people to come here and work in the district. But every, every single person in here has, has hit it on the head. It's, it's a troubling situation right now, right? But I come from the era that you can do. You have to get it done. So it's what we've been talking about for a while. Let's get it done.
Candidate number one.
I think transportation issues are one of the biggest issues, and it's also especially important to me because my mom actually retired a couple of years ago, and her first job within the school district was as a bus driver. So I know how difficult it can be for bus drivers. One thing is that we have to introduce the bus drivers and talk to them at the town halls and at events and get them involved within everything. Their voices need to be heard. I know that a lot of issues happen on the buses. I believe that some of the bus issues have been reduced with phones being away in school settings, which includes buses. But the issues that happen on the bus with students need to be taken as seriously in the buildings as in-school events and disciplinary issues. We need to show the bus drivers that we care and that we are listening to them just as equal as any other stakeholders in the district. Several people on this panel have said that they like surveys, so maybe we need to send the bus drivers some surveys and get some ideas from them. Obviously, none of us are bus drivers, so we don't understand everything that they go through when they're driving these buses. But I, I, as an ESL teacher, I've experienced bus drivers coming to me frustrated that they cannot communicate or understand what students are saying. And in, in the district that I currently work in, I've been coming up with plans to implement with bus drivers for how to communicate with their students. And I imagine if you have fifteen students get on your bus that speak fifteen different languages, that on top of disciplinary issues, on top of driving somebody else's route because there are absences, it has to wear down on you, and we have to figure out how to alleviate some of this wear and tear on our bus drivers.
Candidate number two.
Um, as Camille was saying, we have to tread lightly, being on the board right now in negotiations with this issue. Um, as I was saying, I was at Weston High School, called you two bus drivers, like Chelsea was saying, to get their input. There's not a lot I can say to them, I listen to them, both of them, but I'm not allowed to really say too much, being in negotiations right now. Um, I think we're doing a great job trying for recruitment with Evan DeBeau, our communications guy. We're trying to hire new people. But since COVID, this is, like I said, is a statewide problem with bus drivers. It is hurting not just us, it's all around the state. And it's sad and we are trying to make this whole situation better. Bus drivers are so important. Kids are getting school late. They're missing part of their classes. I understand that. Um, as far as our fleet, we do have a program to keep rotating our fleet out to have new buses. And I thank our maintenance people and Mark Meadows have done a great job in cycling old buses out and getting new buses. But like I said, this is one of those subjects I really can't talk a lot about, being on the board right now and being in negotiations. But I am listening to the bus drivers. Trust me, like I said, I was listening to two of them just this evening. I do listen, but it is a complex problem we have. Thank you.
Our next question, what barriers do you see? And what is your plan to address attracting and retaining high quality teachers? And we'll start with candidate number four.
Barriers? I think that when I came in to appoint a seat, the barrier I saw was we were behind in hiring. Um, and I will say that because I'm gonna give my own family example. We lost my son, who's a seventh grade math and science teacher, to Worthington. Um, and it was because we didn't snag him fast enough. But we have been able to make strides and change that, um, recently in the contract and I am grateful for that. Um, because school districts are competitive out there. He got slapped a offer in November before he had even graduated. So Southwestern has to be just as aggressive and get out there and snag this, this potential that is out there, young potential. Um, and so we need to, um, hire early. Um, we also need to make sure that we are to, to retain. We need to make sure that we are, um, supporting those that continue to return. Um, again, with those surveys, I explained that asking those questions of when someone's ready to go, why are they leaving? Um, so that we can figure out what is our, our deficits? What is our positives? Um, also, we need to ensure that we are going out and recruiting that is serving of what our district population is and make sure we are not blindsided by that. There is individuals out there who are qualified. There is individuals out there who are educated and we are missing them right in our back door. And so we have to do better at that.
Candidate number five.
Well, I think obviously we have to offer competitive packages. And that's more than just we have to pay them the most. Uh, every job will look at things from a numbers standpoint. Pay is obviously from the candidate's perspective, a large part of it. But we need to make sure that as we go through negotiations with the teachers, bus drivers, everybody, uh, that we're offering competitive packages to attract and keep the talent that we have. We also need to do, I think, a better job at recruiting. Uh, I think we need to see the teachers reflect more of the student body. Uh, if, if our students are coming from these homes where they're speaking different languages and they're representing different parts of, than what I'm seeing most of us in here. Um, we need to make sure that the teachers are there. That will help those kids feel more connected. It'll help them learn better and become a, a better member of society. Uh, once again though, I also want to mention that I think we need to tone down the rhetoric at the school board meetings because this does affect the way people view our district. Looking around here, I'm guessing most of us have had a job. And if you've ever worked at a, a job that had a toxic work environment, it's not fun. It makes you not want to come into work. I think that the district, uh, if, if we tone down the rhetoric at the school board meetings, I think our district would have a better, uh, perception out there and people would look at us as a place that they want to come to. Uh, and I think that would help.
Candidate number six.
May I have a moment, please? Is it okay if I have my cell phone open with a spreadsheet on it?
Sure.
Is that okay?
I was just told the rules that you weren't supposed to have phones.
Okay.
Is that one of the rules?
We did not set a rule about phones.
I'm sorry?
We did not set any rules about phones.
We didn't set rules about phones? So that's fine. This step is just for information.
Um, for me, this is, this is why I would have to really go and talk to our hiring process, talk to the people that are here. I understand hiring teachers can be, you know, can be a tough decision. You also have to remember the metric of where every teacher's at. We have a teacher that comes in at base pay and as they go through their line, they make more money. And in the district here, we average eighty thousand dollars in what we're paying per, per teacher. Do not begrudge that money. I wish it was a hundred thousand, right? But we do have budgets in our system. So you have to have a blend between new, mid-level and old. I believe back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we went through offering incentive packages to our older teachers to get them to move on and retire so we could bring younger blood in, but that came at a cheaper price. So there's a lot of different nuance, a lot of different things that go on that I'm really not qualified to sit here and really tell you. I can tell you the budgets, I can tell you certain things. I don't have really a clear objective of how I would, would hire teachers to get them to come here. You know, I would seek advice, I guess, from our administration for what they thought was the best way to go from there.
Candidate number one.
I have so much to say on this in two minutes, it's not enough. Um, teachers coming into this district are not prepared. Um, they come in and they honestly, from my point of view and from other staff that I've spoken to, we hear Southwestern City Schools. And for quite a few of us, it sounds like a cushy job. Um, we have no idea where we're being placed. Finland for me was very difficult to go into and learn the culture and climate of the school. The students there have completely different needs from other areas in the district. Um, as a teacher who has worked in the district and has decided to go elsewhere, I will say this is not necessarily something we can really control. But insurance costs in this district for staff are astronomical. I took a pay cut switching districts, but I went from an almost one thousand dollar a month insurance price for my family to a hundred and twenty dollars a month. It, it makes a big difference. Um, also, when I was hired at Finland Middle School, I was one of seventeen new hires. So we had seventeen new staff members coming in who had never taught in their lives. Most of them have quit teaching at this point or have left to go to other schools. They are not prepared. Um, something that a couple of people on the panel touched base on, but I'm just gonna call it what it is. We need to hire more diversity. We need to go to HBCUs. We need to go to places, there are HBCUs in Ohio. We need to go places and get, um, educators who, who look like our students because students work better. It's been proven, there's, there's data, it's statistics, students who don't see people that look like them don't do as well in school. Um, and I'm not saying this as a teacher who, you know, has just been doing this for funsies. I was an Ohio Teacher of the Year nominee and I'm a two-time Ohio TSAL presenter on the subject. So I have the data, the background and the knowledge to back up these things. Um, really quick, students with skills on my literacy, why are we not hiring them? Sorry.
Candidate number two.
Chelsea, I'm sorry to hear that, um, it wasn't a better mentoring ship because that's not what I'm told. Um, the profession with the teachers is another profession that young adults aren't going into. And the very, very, very slim amount of teachers that are out there to grab, I, I truly believe our administration is going, I mean, they're traveling all over the state to get teachers. Um, Matt DeCastro and his crew, they're, I can't imagine how many miles they traveled to find new teachers. Um, exit surveys, like Camille was saying, I think we do that and, and trying to find out what's going on. But a, a, a big thing is, like Jason says, the negativity that's been going on in our district. People don't want to come to this district because they think it's dysfunctional. And like I said, it's not. And it's proven by the contract that we just signed, five to zero with our teachers. We appreciate our teachers. No matter what anybody thinks of me and what I say, I appreciate our teachers so, so much. But there is a balance between how much we pay our teachers and the tax money that comes in from the residents of this community. And we try to walk that balance very, very good. And I, I, I think we do good. I hope the teachers are satisfied with their contract. I mean, it's definitely a five-zero vote. We all thought it was a good contract. They thought it was a good contract. So like I said, it's rough out there with our bus drivers, getting bus drivers, getting teachers. It's just our whole economy right now and these areas of education are tough. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Candidate number three.
A large portion of the students that I teach at Wittenburg are education majors and education minors. Um, I happen to teach quite a few of their electives, uh, especially public speaking. That helps them understand how to command a classroom. And I do know that very few students, at least in Ohio, are choosing education as a major. Um, and a lot of it has to do with the hostility towards teachers, uh, the hostility towards global learning. When we make diversity, equity and inclusion bogeymen and that caring for our students and meeting them where they are, how they like, prefer to be treated, uh, the names they prefer to use, and those are made into culture war issues. Teachers don't want to teach in Ohio. They don't want to teach in Florida. The sense of academic freedom is lacking. When you are told you can or cannot say certain things in your classroom, freedom of speech doesn't, as I said at board meetings, it does not stop at our school doors. So I do believe, yes, there is divisiveness because of culture wars that are constantly being fought. If we continue to join organizations that prefer to segregate differently-able students, our teachers aren't going to want to teach here. If we're constantly saying that we can only have English only everywhere, teachers aren't going to want to teach in our schools. We are in a twenty-first century global economy. We have a diverse district. We have amazing cultures. We should embrace that and we should let our teachers do what they have trained to do, what they are paying tens of thousands of dollars in loans to do, that they have given up other industries to do. And we should trust them at that. When we finally do that and stop handicapping or putting leashes on what they can or cannot have in their own classrooms, then perhaps the divisiveness will end.
Our next question, regarding special education services, including gifted and talented education. What are the strengths and weaknesses you have identified within these programs? And what is your plan to address them? We will start with candidate number five.
Special education is something that's very important to me. Uh, I have children in this district who have been on IEPs and 504. So in, for my family, this is, is very personal. I think some of the strengths is those, uh, intervention specialists are some of the most caring people you'll ever meet. But I also think they're overworked. I think they have too many kids on their caseloads. I think we need to find a way to increase the number of intervention specialists so that they each have fewer kids they are responsible for. That way they can be in touch with them and their families because it, for a lot of those kids, it's not just about the kid themselves. It's about the family. The family needs to be supported. I have a nephew in the district who was just recently suspended. And he was told by an administrator, well, his mother was, that this would go differently if he was normal. So I think there needs to be better training involved as well. Uh, no parent should ever have to hear something along those lines. You, you don't refer to a kid as not normal, that, that's just not right. Uh, I don't care what special needs they have, um, that's just wrong. We need to change that.
Candidate number six.
Special needs, we have twenty-one thousand students here. Each one of them present a perspective of, uh, this different, new months. Uh, to put out and not have, for me, not to think of every twenty-one thousand students, I think would be wrong of me. Now, when we put someone in the label, we call it a, you know, I, it's an IEP or 504. It takes special commitment to advocate for those children. And that's what I talked earlier about advocating. I do not blame the parent for advocating day and night. It's their child and I understand that. And through my journeys of, of running for the school board and outdoor knocking, I ran into five individuals. And of the five, four were very happy with how our district is handling their situation. One was not. I'm interested in the one. I'd like to hear what the one has to say more, like to learn from them, learn what we could do better. Because there's everything, you know, in life, you climb the mountain, right of education, you're here, you keep trying to climb. You climb and there's days that don't go so well, but you get back up and you try. And every student deserves that, that input that we're trying. We're trying to do the best for you, right? And positivity is something I will circle back to regardless of your situation. Let's think of it as what we can do to help. And I'm very open to listening and to anyone with any issue of the, the one out of the five I'm most concerned about. Because I want to circle back to them and find out what we could do to make them feel better and to make better and have better results. And that's how, that's how I look at it. As a board member, I will make sure that that happens.
Candidate number one.
Um, I'm glad that this question included gifted and talented because there are multitude of exceptionalities within the special education curriculum. Um, I have found personally that gifted students are being identified but are not receiving as many services as they could depending on where they live in the district. Um, sometimes they're offered to move schools because of their gifted label. Sometimes they are told that if they remain at their school, they cannot receive the services that they would qualify for. Um, I actually had done some research earlier this week and last week about special education within the district. And one of the biggest gaps we have in the special education sector is the pre-k students and the high school students. Within the preschool, the students that are in the special needs preschools are reaching their gap closing goals, which is amazing. They're reaching the, the amount that we want them to learn. But they are not getting to where typical five to six-year-olds should be. I think that involves us communicating with families. That involves us figuring out where they come in and where we can get them to. But also, some of them are not going to reach the goals of typical five and six-year-olds. And we need to understand that. They are in the special needs program for a reason. Um, I have two children that are on IEPs. I have one who gets speech services and one who has autism, anxiety, ADHD, selective mutism, and so on and so forth. So I have been in IEP meetings where, um, they just constantly go on about the negative things that the students cannot do. And it just brings the students down. We need to make sure that all of our students who are asking for, um, ETR, IEP meetings are getting RTI, are getting RTI. And we need to make sure that the students know that even if they do have lags in their education, that they are also bringing positive forward.
Audience, please remember to turn off your phones. Do that now if you haven't done so. Candidate number two.
Um, just to start out, our special needs teachers are saints. I mean, I talk to them and I hear about them getting bit, beat up and everything else. I mean, we have special needs teachers that are off for weeks after a confrontation with a child. Um, Jason's right, the caseload in our district is overwhelming. And the teachers that we have, and special needs teachers, I should say, to deal with that are slim. They're slim. I mean, everybody across central Ohio is fighting for special needs teachers. I mean, everybody across central Ohio is fighting for special needs teachers. And we're going out there and we're trying to get them. It's like I said, another area that, that just not a lot of people are going into, they don't want to deal with it. I think this district is great from where we get kids started and where they finish by the time they're graduating in our schools. But it's rough sometimes. I mean, 30% of our kids are ready for kindergarten. We got kids coming to kindergarten in diapers that these teachers have to deal with in these situations, and it's tough for them. I, I, I think the district as a whole is trying to do their best to recruit these teachers and try to bring down the caseload. But I really think it all goes back to the caseload that we're involved with in our community and how much we have to deal with and what we're putting on these special needs teachers. I do feel for them, I feel for them so much what they have to deal with. I'll leave it at that.
Candidate number three.
Some of the things that our board has done actually goes into that inclusion part because we want to have every single learner and community member, member included. So by having, for example, microphones at board meetings, make sure that, make sure that everyone, regardless of your hearing ability, or maybe your attention span sometimes, actually hears everyone, so that I inclusion is important. That's part of what's called universal design for learning. What might help a, an identified IEP student, that might actually help a non-IEP student. The way in which, I don't understand Common Core math, I really don't, I'm a Gen Xer, I don't get it. However, the way my students taught, my, my students, my kids actually taught it to me, I was like, oh, I would never have thought about adding things like stupidizing, that was weird for me. Now I do that in my own statistics classes. And that was just a different way of teaching someone who looks at it more visually rather than, you know, the traditional numeracy. So understanding how we can give our teachers the freedom to incorporate things like universal design for learning into their curriculum and how they deal with their students on that one-on-one basis, especially using technology like assisted technology, our Chromebooks can handle assisted technology. We all use that speech to text, even though Siri never understands what I'm saying with whatever accent I have, or perhaps even text to speech. There are so many free apps and opportunities and professional development for our teachers to widen the lens rather than narrow it only specifically for these specific students. My kids started in the peer model preschool at the old Harmon Elementary, and it was really important to me because it was one of the most diverse areas that they could go to preschool. And it was hectic for me in the middle of graduate school to do that.
Candidate number four.
So I'm going to answer this question from a different perspective, not necessarily regurgitating what Kelly and Chelsea has said, because they've already stated some key facts there. But what I will say is, is I have a son who was on an IEP, he was diagnosed when he was in kindergarten, and that was because I knew something was off with his learning. And what I will say is during that time and over the course of my years volunteering throughout the district and serving our committees, I found that parents didn't understand fully what IEPs are, what does an ETR mean, what is the language, the lingua? We're talking BLTs and, you know, CCCs, all these acronyms, it's foreign to them. So that's where we got to start as well, ensuring that, do our parents understand the language? Do they understand what they can ask for? I sat in 2021, right after COVID, there was a grant on the Family Ambassadors Program, and it was for middle school students transitioning on IEPs. And it was a small grant, it lasted for about a year, maybe a year and a half. Then grant funding ended, we was hopeful that it would try to continue on, but it did not happen. I would be so gracious to try to work on that and getting that back. Because what I found from those parents that we did speak with and pilot and talk to, they didn't understand the language. And so we need to ensure we have the resources to help educate our parents when they come in and we learn that their child has a deficit, explaining to them what that is, how to link them to the resource, and how to advocate. And then supporting our staff to ensure that our intervention specialists have what they need.
Our next question. What issues will you advocate for or against with the Ohio State Legislature and positively impact the student body and funding in our district? And we will start with number six.
Tough question for me. You have to weigh in the cost of education versus what you ask for. I will use the example of Columbus, of Columbus City Schools. Columbus City Schools spends $10,000 more dollars per pupil than we spend here. And the outcome for Columbus City Schools is not what we do here. So time and advocating for, for money and advocating for things, be careful what you advocate for until you understand the total picture, is the way I look at it. Understand all the school funding, understand what, where the money comes from. Now, I will caveat that with, I was unhappy, I am a Republican, we're endorsed by the Republican Party. I was not happy with my party when they tried to remove 40% of our, they tried to put a 40% threshold on us. I thought that our school system did a great job here. We had $240 million plus or minus in our reserves. If you regard, sorry, our treasurer did a wonderful job of having that money here within our district. And then they were going to take it away. We were set to lose $120 million. And that's where we rose up and said, no, that's not, and I believe Chris actually went down to the State House. I made phone calls to legislators because we're in support of public education and the monies that are there, right? So, you know, the advocating, I understand, I just, I have, understand what you're asking for is what I'll say before you ask, it's complicated.
Candidate number one.
I think some of the things that we need to look for in the state legislation also go up to the national level. So some of the things that I am most concerned about include Title III funds. For those who are not familiar, Title III funds are funds that are accessible to English-language learners. It's been touched on before, but we have 2,200 English-language learners in over 81 languages. And we also have 1,800 students in the district that speak another language other than English who are not English-language learners, whether they have exited, which means they pass the state test that they need to be considered a non-English-language learner. By the way, even when they exit, they still fall under Title III because we still have to watch them and keep data on them. But Title III funds have been up in the air and they've been at risk, and that would cut EL services, that would cut EL teachers, that would cut bilingual assistance. Our school is very, our school district is very lucky to have bilingual assistance in the majority of the schools, even if it's only a couple days a week or one day a week. I was lucky enough to have a Spanish bilingual assistant every single day at Franklin Heights and a Somali bilingual assistant two days a week, and then a Ukrainian bilingual assistant on call as we needed her. If Title III funds are diminished and they decide not to provide those to support our English-language learners anymore, we might not have those people to help us. I might not have a job. And then the other thing that I'm very passionate about as far as legislature is pushing for free student breakfast and lunch for every single student within the school district.
Candidate number two.
Everybody knows this past year was very confrontational with the budget, putting a cap on our carryover. Like Steve said, I did go down with you to the State House, took a day off, worked to go down there and sit for eight hours. This district has been so good with our money. We haven't had a levy, operator levy since '09. What Hugo Arce and Bill Wise has done in this district is very, very commendable. They have, with our new buildings, everything that, that we got built, that we're building in the future, they have set up a plan so well, and they should be commended for that. As far as advocating, I mean, I think all the board members were calling their representatives. We were meeting with them to tell them this is not right to take money from our district when we financially feasible with our money. We have saved money, we've put money away for our students. I mean, this money is there to pay teachers, to pay special needs teachers. I mean, without that money that we have in our bank, we wouldn't be able to hire the people we hire, and we definitely need to hire more people. There's no doubt about that. We would like to hire so many more people, but the money available is just not there. And we're starting to deficit spend in this district. So there's a fine line, how many people we can hire and the areas we now hire them, hire them in. So it's a, it's, it's a complex equation. And we are, as a board, I think, are trying to deal with that. But trust me, we are trying to hire more individuals throughout this district. But the money that the state was trying to take from us was the biggest thing that we stood up against and made our voices heard.
Candidate number three.
There's one word for this, and it's called vouchers. Over a billion dollars are being sent to less than 10% of the children in this state. Our district is no longer in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. It's an easy win, it was a lot cheaper than a private lawyer per month. The first thing I would do is to rejoin that lawsuit because it is unconstitutional, it will go all the way up to the Supreme Court, but there have already been rulings on it. We are losing money hand over fist because public education is under attack at our State House. Right now, the state gives 36% more to a private school voucher student than it does its K through 12 public student. It's a little over $2,000 per student. These private schools do not have to meet state standards, they do not have to have an income cap, they do not have to have teachers that actually are licensed to teach. I believe vouchers do have a place in our school system, but there should be income gap, there should be income caps, there also should be need-based, not every learner learns best in a traditional school setting. Our district should be fighting every day. I have my state senator and state representatives' phone numbers saved in my phone, I hope everyone else does. Every single day, when they're in session, I'm calling them, letting them know how I feel about any given bill because I make sure that I actually read them. We also don't have a designated state legislator liaison. Yes, everyone has the ability to call, but we haven't had a state legislative report since December 11th of 2023. So we need people that are going to actually fight and communicate with the community what we're doing at the state level for our district.
Candidate number four.
This one I am going to piggyback on, Kevin. Public education funding and vouchers. I respect every parent's right to choose the educational setting that best fits their child, whether public, private, charter, homeschool. However, I do not support the use of public tax dollars to fund private or charter school tuition through voucher programs. Public education dollars are meant to serve our community's students in the neighborhoods they are, they are in. Diverting these funds to private institutions reduces resources for critical programs, staff, resources, and services in our public schools. Schools that serve all students regardless of income, ability, or background. As funding is redirected, districts are forced to depend more on local property taxes, including increasing the burden on homeowners, and this is unfair. What I will tell you is, I am a licensed social worker, and I work with older adults. That has been my specialty area for the past 22 years. They are raising grandchildren, so I help them navigate. But the common question that they are bringing up is how can they age at home? And funding is a huge part of that because when we have to go to our taxpayers for a levy because the money is being diverted away from our kids, that impacts our older adults having an opportunity to stay at home and age at home. So therefore, we have to continue to fight against these dollars going to voucher programs. We have to continue to advocate for this.
Candidate number five.
All right, since vouchers have been brought up, I do want to mention that just because if all vouchers went away, doesn't guarantee that, that money would all come back to us. The state has a big problem when it comes to funding schools. I think that needs to be a priority for the district to advocate for. We need to have people down there at the State House representing us, representing the kids. We need to make sure that they come up with a fair way to fund these schools, period, regardless of whether it's for ESL or special needs or anything. We need to be fighting hard for that. We need to have somebody whose entire job is to spend some time down there and let them know what our needs are. Another reason why those, those opportunities to talk to the community would be helpful so that we know what they're looking for and how can we then fight for them, how can we represent them when we're talking to our state legislature? To make sure that we come up with a fair funding, not only for the state of this district, but for every district around the state.
Thank you. Our last question of the evening. Southwestern City Schools is a diverse district, including geographically. How will you navigate making policy decisions and consider the needs and interests of all students in all corners of the district? We'll start with candidate number one.
So I have been recently driving all over the district. I didn't realize that I could go from being, you know, hilltop adjacent to cornfields real quick. And I think it's very important to consider the needs of not just the students and the learners, but the families. I have personally experienced a lot of things that people don't consider that teachers do. I have had students commit suicide, and I've had to go to their funerals, and their families don't speak English. So they're like, who is this lady walking into this funeral? I've had students in middle school have babies because they don't have the rights or the, the resources that they need to know what they're doing. I think that there are many things that need to be considered within our district, and 100%, the diversity is here, we need to be seeing the diversity and embracing it. One thing that I was starting to touch base on before I ran out of time is that we have students graduating every year with seals of biliteracy that speak multiple languages fluently. These students are from our community, they're from our district, and they could be utilized within our schools in our district as community liaisons, as bilingual assistants, and they would be able to help the schools and the staff and the families be more comfortable with the communication going on. I also believe that we need to consider, when we see one school that's doing well and we say, how do we apply that to all the schools? That doesn't always work. If it works well in a rural school, we probably can't take it over to Finland Middle School and have it work well. We need to see what's going well and then figure out how to adapt it to benefit our students and our staffs across the district.
Candidate number two.
With our diversity, I think this district honestly, we, oh, thank you. Honestly, we can always do better. We can always do better in every area of education. This district is, has associations with the Somali community, Muslim community, the Hispanic community, with our community and schools programs. It would amaze you guys how many kids are homeless in this district. It's sad. I think we do a good job to connect with these kids and get them on the right track. Like Chelsea was saying, it is amazing, and she's right. I went out and I kept driving and driving past Darby Dance Farms. It's amazing, 119 square miles this district covers, and it is very diverse. But overall, this district, I think, does a great job in trying to help out every diversity ethnic group and everything else in this district. I mean, with all the languages we speak and Ed Kennedy and what he's done to our English-language learners. I mean, with all the languages we speak and Ed Kennedy and what he's done to our English language learners, and where they start at in this district is amazing where they end up. I mean, it, it, it's, it's so, it warms my heart to have these kids that come to our country, that speak English at all, and by the time they graduate, they are prospering. And that's what I think this country's about. I think that the district's about. And I think, like I said, we do a great job here at the Southwestern City Schools with that.
Candidate number three.
Like I said before, I think meeting our communities where they are, not just physically, but also chronologically, um, as well as the languages that they're speaking. Um, we should have interpreters or at least closed captioning perhaps at a lot of our events. Do we have that? Do we wait till someone asks for an ASL interpreter, or do we offer that, um, in advance? Can we be proactive in that? I also think that, I'm gonna say another, you know, boogeyman word, socio-emotional learning. You know, we are going into, again, that global economy, and we have to be able to understand how to talk to people that are different than us, that have different experiences, that have different beliefs. And if we don't understand, if we don't teach those skills at the secondary level or even in the middle school level, it's really hard to teach them those when they get to the collegiate level, uh, where they finally do get to meet other people that don't live down the block from them. And they get to learn, wow, this is how other people worship. This is how other people, you know, I didn't know I could have mac and cheese at my Thanksgiving until I was introduced to it, and now it's the first thing that's gone every year. So even just that exposure to those other cultures is exactly how our children learn. And I believe our communities don't need to be as segregated as they are, and our board doesn't either. We can go to those communities. We can hear what they're saying. But we also need to be able to understand what they're saying and speak with them with the same respect and show that they are valued, that they're not a drain on our district, that they are a huge part and a really important part of our culture and of our district.
Candidate number four.
So as everybody knows, southwestern is urban, rural, suburban, right? So as I've always said, I'll go back to my response to question number one. I'm committed to advocating for equity of resources across the district. What does that mean? One building's needs is not the same as another's. Our investments should reflect the unique circumstances of each school. Buildings that already have strong fiscal and resource stability do not always require more. Instead, they must fully utilize what is available. The more, the board must be intentional in decision-making and avoid approving measures that create or widen inequities between schools. By ensuring resources are distributed, are based on actual needs, we can stop cycles of inequity and strengthen opportunities for every student, no matter where they live at in this district.
Candidate number five.
I think that one of the things we need to do is, is as Camille talked about earlier, is keep all of our stakeholders in mind here. And a key way to do that is to listen more than we talk. I don't know what every student's need is, neither does any of these candidates. Despite what anybody would say, they don't know everybody's needs. So we need to be more involved with surveys, with giving the public an opportunity to give us feedback, uh, to let us know what their needs are. Uh, I think a good place to start, and I'll, I'll start with the PTA. That's, that's where those parents get involved first. They're not, they're way more likely to show up to a PTA meeting than to a board meeting. So we need to stay in contact with the PTAs. We need to hear what are they hearing? What, what are, what are the needs of the sc- uh, kids at those individual schools? We need to stay in touch with the teachers, uh, because a- at the end of the day, they're the ones that are there with the kids day in and day out. They're gonna see what those kids are saying without their words, and we need to hear what those teachers are seeing. We need to stay close to the administration as well and hear what they have to say, because they're gonna see it from a slightly different lens than the teachers or the PTA. And then we take all that and, like I said, listen more than we talk. Take all that advice and information that we're getting, all that feedback, and figure out what the best policy is to, to benefit the students.
Candidate number six.
We have a hundred and twenty thousand square, a hundred and twenty thousand square miles here, right? So a hundred and twenty square miles, I apologize. I've already told you, that's a little large in private state of Ohio. So the students that we have, again, I'll mention twenty-one thousand. Asian Pacific, two point six five. Black students, seventeen percent. We have point eleven percent of Indian Alaskan, twenty-one Hispanic, fifty-two white, seven point five multiracial. We also have sixty-seven percent of our district who are economically disadvantaged. Seventeen percent are non-English speaking. Twenty percent are disabled. Let's embrace it, but we must sell ourselves. And we must tell our members within this community that we have a tough job. But there are metrics measured. The last board meeting, I will tell you that there's a category that we fit into where they measure all the nuanced, uh, areas that we have here against other type districts. And as you know, we're doing very well. I thought that was very interesting at the last board meeting, because it's easy to get involved in everything that's, that's negative, that things that are going wrong. But when you start comparing it to incomparables to similar districts, I don't do that bad. That's not perf- remember, I will tell you again, it's not perfect. But in the end, do we put forth, as I serve on the board, do we put forth and can I instill others to be positive? To understand, we have no other word to go. The negativity, if this was a company, we had three hundred and twenty-some million dollars we spent here. And if this company that we were involved, if I was involved with this company and the negativity that's here, you would not be in business long. So I would encourage all of us to figure out, I apologize.
Thank you, candidates. We will now have our closing statements. Again, the timing will be the same, and I'll start with candidate number one.
Recently, a woman asked me why I'm running for Southwestern City Schools Board of Education if I teach in another district. She told me that I needed to pay attention to what I was doing in the district I work in. And I thought about it. I'm proud to have taught in Southwestern City Schools. Southwestern City Schools is my home. It's where I live. It's where I'm raising my children. And I'm blessed and honored to get to work in a district and have an effect on children, and then come home to another district and hopefully do the same thing. Um, in twenty-one days, hopefully, if I get elected, I will be able to serve two communities and highlight and honor the both of them. Upon that response, the woman told me that it was weird. Okay, um, I argue that if it's weird that I want to do something that makes an impact on children, on families, on communities. If I want to teach all day and then come home and deal with my kids and then go to a board meeting, then yeah, I'm really weird, because that is my end goal. I want to do something that makes an impression on students, on parents, on community members, on business owners, on the aging community in the district. And I, I know that the three women sitting up here, we have the same goals. And I know that we want to make sure that every voice in the district gets heard and that every child in the district is seen.
Candidate number two.
Oh, sorry. Over the past, um, two years on this board, we've done great things. I love the momentum that's going in this district, and I want to keep it up. Um, we've hired a new superintendent. Randy Banks is a great man. We're, we should be blessed to have him. We've expanded our career academy. This career academy is a gem, like you were saying. My son went here. I love this place. Not every kid needs to go to college. I went to college for three years and wasted three years of my life and wasted a lot of money when I could have went to a place like this, it came out, it got right into career path. And that's what he did. He was in auto mechanics. So we've expanded this career academy. Um, we started therapy development program throughout our district, which has helped these kids out so much. We expanded high school athletics. We've gotten rid of cell phones in our learning environment, and that was well before the state mandated it. From the day I was on the school board, I talked about cell phones, getting them out of our learning environment. And finally, we did. And I think it's made a tremendous impact. I was at Westland, and Mr. Gostilla had a cart, and he had twelve phones on it that they took from the kids today. And he said, this is a light day, but I love that they're doing that. They're sticking to it. They're teaching these kids, we do not need to be on social media twenty-four seven. It's rotting their brains. I get, I get on my kids. Heck, I get on my wife about it. It's terrible with these phones too. But with everything we're doing, and also a lot of people like to complain about the lawyer. Over the past two years, we have saved a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in legal fees in this district since Omar has been put on this board. We use many, many lawyers in this district, not just Omar. We have five, six, seven. Thank you.
Candidate number three.
I appreciate everyone who came here today, um, those of you that are watching in the livestream and those of us that are up here. We may row in different directions. We may paint our boats different colors. Uh, but we all have the same goal, which is to have an educated community and to have a supported community. My ideas are different than other people's, and that's fine. Um, but they're only ideas. We have to listen to our community. We have to hear from our stakeholders, and that's where our direction is going to come from. We need to have people that are going to fight for us every single day. It's not going to get easier if there's a new governor. It's not going to get easier if there's no more pandemic. It's not going to get easier, period. So we need to have people up here that value public education, that value individuals who teach there, who sweep the floors, who drive the buses, who clean the buses, who fix the buses. Every single individual in this district, if you are being paid by us, you should, and you should feel valued and seen. Every individual in those hundred and nineteen square miles should be valued and seen. I don't think I'm going to reach every single person, and I know there's plenty of people that just don't like me, and that's fine. I'll pray for them no matter what. But I do know that we can work together regardless of our ideologies and actually fight for this district. Our students are going into an amazing community. I see it every day in my, in my college classes. And they want to go out there and they want to make a difference. The kids are gonna be okay. We just have to be there to support them and give them the resources that they need.
Candidate number four.
As I close, I want to speak not just as a board member, but as someone who has lived and raised a family in this community. I've walked the same halls, sat in the same bleachers, and shared the same hopes that every parent has for, for their child's future. I believe deeply in our schools and our educators and in the strength of this community. I've seen what's possible when we work together, when we focus not on politics but on people. Our students thrive when we unite and when we honor our differences and when we keep our shared commitment to their success at the center of everything we do. This election is not about left or right. It's about ensuring that every student, no matter what their background, has access to a safe, strong, and supportive learning environment. It's about building a future where we lift one another up. I am proud of what we've accomplished together. And I said "we" because I was a part of that board for the last two years. And I'm even more excited about what lies ahead. I ask for your support so we can continue this important work for our students, for our schools, and for our community.
Candidate number five.
I'd like to thank the PTA for putting on this, uh, this evening. It was a great opportunity for all of us to get together and for our voices to be heard. I also want to echo what a lot of the other candidates have said, that, uh, we may have different opinions on how to get things done, but they are just ideas. Uh, i- it's good to see that there are community members willing to step up and, uh, take this on, because we, we want the best for these kids. I also though think it's important that we look at what we're doing with these children. We need to make sure that we're teaching them how to think, not what to think. There's a lot that goes on in the classrooms that, on both sides, I want to be clear, on both sides, that a lot of parents don't agree with, and we need to remove that stuff. The kids need to learn how to think. When I graduated from this district, uh, I, I was here kindergarten through twelve. Had lots of teachers through that time, and I never knew the political leanings of any of my teachers, not a single one. One of those teachers I am friends with on social media, she happens to support these two ladies. But I never knew whatever political leanings were until I started paying more attention to politics in the schools. That's what you should be. You shouldn't know what your teachers believe, ideology, why is politically, anything. I think we need to increase parental involvement. I think we need to do that through communication and transparency. That is how we get all the stakeholders at the table and talking, and how we learn how we can best serve those children within the community. I would want to take a moment also to thank the teachers in this district, because without you guys, uh, we wouldn't really have a need to be up here. You guys are the ones who are working hard, making a difference in those kids' lives. So thank you, and again, thank you to the PTA for tonight.
Candidate number six.
At sixty-one years old, I can tell you that there's a lot of things that, as you get older, that you don't know. And I thank you all for breaking a barrier down for myself. You've been so welcoming here and the attentiveness, and our fellow members here that are running for board. I truly have been blessed to be part of this. In closing, I want to sincerely thank each of you for being here and just showing up. Not just tonight, but every day for our kids, our schools, and our community. Education doesn't begin and end in the classroom. It's shaped by the environment we create together. Parents, teachers, staff, students, and community members alike. When we all show up, when we all contribute, that's when real change happens. I truly believe our students deserve more than just a good education. They deserve our very best. That means safe schools, inspired teaching, strong support systems, and a district that listens and leads with purpose. I'm excited about the road ahead. I'm excited if you're having me to serve. I know there will be challenges, but I'm confident with the open mind and steady hands and a shared commitment to our core values, we can build something extraordinary. I look forward to learning from you, working with you, and doing everything I can to help this district grow and thrive. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your trust and your commitment to the students, and I hope I've earned your vote. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you all very much. Audience, now is your time. Let's hear it for our candidates.
And I just wanted the audience as well, you all behaved beautifully. I appreciate that. And thank you all again for making this work, working with me, communicating with me, so we could all be here tonight and have this opportunity. A lot of thoughtful responses, a lot of things to par, everybody to think about. So, great job, everybody. Thank you.